All right, call into session our Monday, November 1st, regular session of Lake Jackson City Council meeting here at 25 Oak Drive, Lake Jackson, Texas. We're going to lead off with Pledge Allegiance by Councilman Sinhania.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the city, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
I've asked Ms. Carla Christman to provide us with the invocation, please an invocation tonight?
Heavenly Father, thank you so much for bringing these men and women to serve our community, to serve our city, and to serve our citizens. Please help them make the decisions that they must make with knowing your presence and knowing that you are with them through all their decisions. Help them to make the right choices, the right decisions for all those involved. Thank you, Lord, for looking over us and bringing us together safely. And as we leave, please keep us safe on our way. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Next item is visitor comments. Are there any comments from anyone in the audience that, on any item that is not on the regular agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll go to presentations. We have a proclamation to AP Boedel for AP Boedel Day. Let me step down there. I'll read the proclamation, proclamation and then afterwards if y'all could. Background. Danny and crew, where do you want to come up and do this? Yes? I want to take a picture.
We don't, we won't bite.
What they, I asked them to do is such a framed it, we have to put it to small print. I can't read small print.
Okay. I understand.
So I'll read out the proclamation like I said, then if you could, just give some background. Okay, this is the proclamation. I Gerald Brasowski, by virtue of authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Lake Jackson, Texas, do hereby proclaim November 1st, 2021, as AP Boedel Day in the city of Lake Jackson. Whereas AP Boedel campus was named a 2021 National Blue Ribbon School. This is the nation's top honor for individual campuses based on academic achievement. Whereas by designated as a National Blue Ribbon School is extremely difficult to achieve. Whereas recognition which is awarded by the US Department of Education is based on a school's overall academic performance and progress in achieving, achievement gaps in students' subgroups. And whereas is a testament to the hard work and dedication of our campus staff, students, and parents, Boedel earned this great honor for demonstrating dramatic gains in student achievement. Whereas out of 1,247 school districts across Texas, Boedel is one of only 26 schools awarded the National Blue Ribbon School. Only 325 schools across the entire nation received this recognition this year. Now therefore, we, the mayor and city council of City of Lake Jackson, do hereby proclaim November 1st, 2021, as AP Boedel Day in the city of Lake Jackson. In testimony where a witness my hand and seal of the city of Lake Jackson this first day of November 8th, 2021. This is really great.
Yeah.
So why don't y'all, want me to step on this one? It should be in the back. Megan, you go ahead and stand there.
Oh, God.
Coming in by me?
That's the, we're all getting in, right?
Yeah.
He's in? Come on, Jay. All right. All right. Final, last round.
We just need to add some color to this. To this photo.
You gotta have people quick, man. Okay. Tippy toes.
Tippy toes.
Not you guys on the ground. Ready? One, two, three. Say Boedel. Okay, wait, wait, wait. Thanks.
All right. All right.
This one's me, right?
Speech!
I got it, Mayor.
You can bet on it.
There you go.
Testing.
Works.
Thank you very much.
I'm not much of a talker in public, so. Um, we just, we just make sure we service all our kids and we work hard to find out their strengths and their needs and we work together to help them improve in the academics. And I have a fabulous staff that never gives up on the kids. And so we've just continued the process. And Mr. Massey and I are going to Washington DC. We leave Wednesday to go receive our award. So we're excited.
Thank you, Mayor and city council. We, on behalf of Brazzport ISD, we want to thank you for recognizing AP Boedel here. We've had a special relationship for many years with our, with our schools here in Lake Jackson. And the, the performance of this is nationally recognized, obviously. And we will be in Washington DC representing the city of Lake Jackson, Brazzisport ISD, and Brazoria County here soon. I think the greatest thing that I want to share with you about this campus, obviously the commitment of the teachers and academic performance of our students. But after last year, which was arguably the most difficult year of teaching in our era, in our generation at least, with all the fear and anxiety and confusion dealing with COVID, with students, parents, and staff, we had not one single teacher leave Boedel this year. We had 100% teacher retention rate. And to me, that really speaks to the leadership and the culture and the climate of, of that school. So thank you again.
Thank you again. Very good.
Well done.
Before you leave, before you leave, I just want to suggest or request that anytime y'all have any kind of achievements at your school, please let us know so we can recognize that also, okay?
Yeah. Keep up the good work.
Oh, yes, and the parade route. Could you say something real quick about the, the parade that you're going to have?
I just followed directions.
Don't get caught up in Mike.
We are going to have a wonderful ceremony on November the 8th at 9:00 in the morning. We invite all of you, all of you, to join us as we celebrate our AP Boedel Blue Ribbon School. And then about 9:45, we're going to have a parade, a walking parade, going in front of the school. And we would love for everyone to come and sit there and cheer for the kids. They're going to have their blue ribbon shirts on, they're going to walk by, cheer for them because they've really worked really hard and the staff has worked really hard. And I expect to see you all there.
Okay. Yeah. Awesome.
I do want to add, the Education Foundation did purchase shirts for every single child in the school and all the faculty.
That's great.
So that was wonderful. They don't know it yet because we're going to give it to them on the 8th. But it was very, it was very nice of them.
All right.
And thank you.
All right. Thank you all. All right, awesome. Bye.
9:45 is when the parade starts.
And how many of y'all are going to the Desk of Divas or Divas at Desk? All right, we're going to move on to next presentation is the 2021 National Gas Vehicle Achievement Award. Okay, all right, Sabrina.
This was an award that was awarded here to the, the city fleet, but that is headed up by Ms. Gay Shockley. Some of the information on my little communication might be a little off because Ms. Shockley was out of the office and was trying to tease it together. But on the 19th, October 19th, she was out in Phoenix, Arizona, where she was recognized by the NVGA for the Natural Gas Achievement Award for a fleet. Ms. Shockley has a little bit more information. She also would wish to present to you, as she has expressed to me, this isn't an award for myself, this is an award for the city of Lake Jackson, that we have all done this award. So she'd like to give that to you and give you a little bit of information real quick.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so just for like some new people on council, just to tell you a little bit about our program, we purchased our first CNG vehicle trucks 20 years ago, making us the oldest fleet in the state of Texas. Forty percent of our fleet runs on natural gas and 90% of our sanitation fleet does. Incremental cost for the light duty trucks is just over $12,000. And since 2019, we've received $5,000 per truck on a TCQ Turk program. Incremental cost on a garbage truck is just under $27,000. Our total annual fuel savings after the alternative fuels tax credit is over $300,000 per year. There is a proposed litigate, or legislation for a five-year extension to the 50 cents a gallon. So far, sometimes they don't do it and then they do it and they make it retroactive. So we've been able to follow through every year. And for Lake Jackson, this has been a win both financially and environmentally. It was such an honor to get this award and to represent Lake Jackson.
This award isn't just for, just for in Texas. This was throughout the states. Past winners of this fleet award have been city of Philadelphia. And she had given me another one, but she might not be able to say. I do remember city of Philadelphia. So it was, it was actually a pretty, it's a pretty big deal that she's, that she's got this. And I, and I got to give her all the credit for this. I mean, obviously you guys are approving these vehicles that she's bringing up to you, but she puts in a lot of work to make sure she gets these prices and she really pushes to have the natural gas. This is not the only program that she kind of does this with. She also does with some rebates for vehicles by making sure she's using the natural gas or alternative fuel. Then it kind of gives us credits on that and she is tireless in pursuing those type of programs to see what kind of money she can always get. And she's always super excited when she gets that money back for the city and lets us know. So.
We have 332,000 coming.
Yeah. So.
We're excited about that.
She keeps up with all of that and she does a great job with this. So this was, this was a pretty big deal and she got to go out to Phoenix, she represented the city. And as you see, and she's got this award here that she wants to present to you. We'll take and put this into Sally's office when we decide where we want to go. But if you guys would like to see this and if you have any further questions that you want to talk to Ms. Shockley about, send us an email and we can provide you any information you have.
Thank you. Thank you.
Great job, Ken.
Awesome. Thank you for all your efforts.
Great job, ma'am.
You know, it's, it's interesting because, yeah, like you said, it's been 20 years and then we've been into this program and stuff and, you know, sitting in and listening, sitting with HACCA and talking to all these, these other communities and counties and stuff and, and every chance I get, I say something about our program and how well it's done and how it's benefited our community. And I don't know how it got started, but.
How did he start it?
Yeah, I mean, it's somewhere we started thinking out of the box to make it happen.
He was looking for something domestic and with price volatility because then the diesel prices, there was so much fluctuation that affected the budget.
Right.
And so then he ended up, so realistically, this award, I think I put it on my Facebook and I said, you know, it was Kregness that, that put this show on the road or started this rodeo and I just took the reins and went. And Kregness, but who, you know, was just wonderful in this and, and helped get it going. But yeah, it's, it's, it was really obviously touching to get the recognition.
Right.
Well deserved.
Well deserved. Thank you very much. All right, now we have an introduction. Robin.
Yeah, so I think most of you know Robin at this point. She has been our assistant Parks and Rec Director while under Jeremy. She is definitely very capable to do interim work. Maybe she'll even want to do it permanently. We'll see. But I'll let her introduce herself.
My name is Robin Hayden and I have to follow this, so, you know, yeah, make myself look really good now after Gay here. I've been in actually Parks and Recreation for over 30 years. I don't want to tell my age here, but quite a long time. I've been with the city of Lake Jackson for seven of those years. I truly do love being here. I love the city. I've, out of all the cities I've worked for, I can say this is really one that I would, I call home and do hope I can stay a lot longer, so. But I have big shoes to fill, but I think I can do them. I've had a good role model as Jeremy and I look forward to working with each of y'all.
You're welcome.
So thank you so much.
Yep, thank you. Thank you. All right, let's, let's get away from the tears. Next item is Declaration of Conflict of Interest. And this is where any, on a council member, any council member has the opportunity to state if there's a conflict of interest, if they have a conflict of interest of any item on the agenda. Do we have a declaration?
I do actually, yes, Mr. Mayor. I am, I'm going to abstain from participation in item number 11. And I filed the requisite paperwork with the city secretary.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is consent agenda. Consent agenda, we have item one, which is approved the minutes of October 18, 2021. Item two is accept board and commission minutes listed here in the agenda. And then we have item three is ordinance amending chapter 110 zoning to add a requirement that assigned notification notifying the public of a request to rezone must be posted on or near the property to be rezoned. Second reading. Is there any item that council would like to remove for further discussion? If not, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I request that we approve consent, consent agenda items one, two, and three.
Okay, need a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion is second. Only in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, consent agenda is accepted. Go to a regular agenda. We have item one is authorize city manager to execute a contract with Thorn Architects for the architectural design of the animal control facility in an amount not to exceed $240,000. And this is Megan's going to start us off.
Yes, how everyone is aware, we brought this to you guys two meetings ago, asking for Thorn Architects to be the architect for the new animal control facility. The selection committee unanimously selected Mr. Thorn. He is actually here. He drove all the way from San Antonio, so you guys can ask him any questions. He can introduce himself, whatever you guys would like. But currently, we are asking for Modesto to be able to execute the contract that Sherry has been working with Thorn Group on. You'll see in front of you an estimate for the preliminary budget for this. I'll run through it really quick. So as of right now, the preliminary numbers are the architectural design is 240,000. The construction is put at 3 million. Other trades, this is based on previous work plus inflation, we've put at 160. And then contingency, we have at 300,000. So that will take us to the total 3.7 million as approved on the bond proposition. So we feel confident in these numbers for right now, but if anything changes, we'll come back to you guys. So I will let Mr. Thorn introduce himself. He is wonderful. Some of you may have already met him, but go ahead, Lindsay.
Good evening, all.
Good evening.
Thought I'd just come up here, you can put a face with the accent, so. Thanks for inviting us to come and, and work with you guys. We're really looking forward to it. We sort of cut our teeth on a couple of animal control facilities in the past down more southwest Texas, but yeah, we're really excited to start working on this project. I need to ask any questions you may have or?
What's, I guess, what's the normal turnaround on your design and stuff?
I think we'll probably be looking at, we'll have the first blush to you probably within a couple of weeks. Look for you at, normally it's start of design to turning in of construction documents for permitting. It's, it's usually two and a half to three months, depending on how well it goes. I think we all got a pretty good liking to the way that we've laid out in the preview in the past. So I think once we get that with the side orientation on it, I think it'll go pretty quickly.
Yeah, and we're still on track to have it built before our contract expires with the SPCA in 2023. So that is the goal. We'll, we'll try and meet it. He's aware of it, so.
Yeah.
What would you think could be a reasonable construction time for this asset?
I really think roughly the same size. I think probably the one we did, the last one we did was nine, nine and a half months. I think 10, 10 months on the outside is, is ample time. So I think you'd be absolutely fine. And we're working through all different material selections as well. We use some pretty innovative materials down there in, in the Atascosa County area. It's an insulated panel system. There are lots of variants out there, but it, it's interesting because it, it works on a light gauge steel, like you see in a light gauge steel framing of our building, but they're bonded together with basically polystyrene block. So extremely thermally coefficient, great sound attenuation. It was to keep the, the sound from the dog pen area compared to the main office buildings, keeps smells out. But, you know, we're probably 35 to 40% less running costs on that building. They really don't really need to put the AC on in that, in those offices for, I'd say probably only the two or three months of the summer. The rest of the time, they don't even need to put the AC on. It's, it's really, really good stuff. I, I used a similar system back in Europe, so I cut my teeth back on that a number of years ago.
How many of these buildings have you built in the past?
On the, on the animal control ones?
Yes.
That style with that type, that's the first one they did. So working on, we're looking, working on a third one right now, so. So we're looking at, we've also, obviously in where you're located in the world here, we've also been talking about making sure that it could be a lockdown facility in case of hurricanes and storms. So materials we're using are looking at to not only the day-to-day operations of, of economies, but also for ability, you haven't got to move the animals out, they can stay there. So that's part of what we're doing, some more investigative work for that area. And I've worked down in some of the areas before, down in Beeville and Bee County.
Okay.
So I've dealt with a bunch of the hurricane zones down there, so I'm pretty familiar with them.
All right, thank you, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions? No. If you had a chance to drive around our city a little bit and get a flavor for our community?
Yes, sir. Yeah, no, it's great. You've got a great city down here. It really is nice.
Yeah.
Yeah, I remind this sort of having been around the states quite a bit in the last 26 years now, it's got, it's funny, you get, you get moods and emotions of, of remind you of, of where you've been and, and there's certain elements like coming over, coming over the bridge into St. Pete's Beach reminds me a lot of coming here. It's very interesting. You've got some real lovely qualities around here. It's a great community. I live in a pretty small community in San, in, in San Antonio. I moved from one small community to the small community. And so, yeah, I like that, that every knows everybody and it's, it's a good feeling. Everybody pulls together when they need to.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. All right, we need to. All right, so we have to, we have to authorize city manager. So we'll take, need to do a motion.
I move, make a motion to authorize city manager to execute a contract with Thorn Architects for the architectural design of an animal control facility in Mountain. I took say $240,000.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any comment from the audience? All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. Move to item two, discuss and consider BISD request to use Lake Jackson Civic Center as a temporary reunification center for students and parents during emergencies. Assistant Chief Cybott. And congratulations on your promotion.
Thank you very much, Mayor, council, staff. Good evening. I'd like to bring before you a request by BISD. I've been part of their security committee for several years. BISD has been working diligently to ensure each and every campus is secure as best as possible. One of those examples is this, they're trying to actually find a place for all the parents, guardians, and children to reunify at one central location. And so we've talked, they've written a letter to council and they're requesting to use a civic center, which is an ideal location. It's large, it's right off the highway and everybody knows where it's at. So I also have here members of BISD in case you have any questions, but I would request that you consider using that as a site. Obviously it would be used in a, in a critical situation. It's not something that they take lightly, nor do we.
Have y'all ever had to evacuate the schools for any purpose?
Yeah, what kind of scenario do you envision using this for?
Well, basically, any type of critical situation where something, someone lost their life or some type of situation of that nature, obviously you didn't want to evacuate the students to a safe area and the parents would be really worried about them. So we want to make sure that they know where to go because in that time of need, parents want to know, where do I go? Well, obviously we tell them upfront where the reunification site is. It takes that, that worry off their mind. They know exactly where to go to. And yes, I'm sure there's been situations in different schools where they've had a situation. I remember one actually not too long ago in Clute. But as far as our local schools, I don't remember one personally. I'm sure that the members of BISD can answer any of those questions for you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity. Yeah, just wanted to give a little more clarification too, because we've recently had to evacuate Matt Griffith Elementary. There's a gas leak in the area. We removed those students to a nearby facility at the Dow Academic Center. So what we're looking at in this situation is the second step or the second area of reunification. In the event that we had to take those kids beyond that first off-campus reunification site because we had a major, major event and we had to shut down the block or the area, then only then would we move the students to the civic center.
And how would y'all be transporting them to the civic center?
Good question. We would have, we have bus transportation plans for, for reunification. We have those all drawn out. And again, those would only be used if we had to go to the secondary site is what we would call the civic center.
What, what's the population of Meatwood over there?
2,400 students.
Nine in the.
Yes, sir.
2,400?
Nine in Maine, yes, 2,400.
The, once you get the students to the campus, what is your procedures that you'll have put in place there and so it's not, just doesn't become complete chaos?
Yeah, so, so after Santa Fe, we did an extensive training of all of our campuses for reunification for that very reason. We, we don't want chaos after, after we've already experienced chaos, obviously. And originally, we were planning on doing a reunification at another campus, but we know that if something happens at, at one campus, every parent's coming to every campus to pick up their kid. So Mr. Morrow's here, our coordinator of safety and security, and he does campus audits. And we saw a very, very high-quality reunification take place last week. We have stations set up, we have student information packets, we have cards for the parents. I wish you guys could have seen it. It was, it was actually a very good opportunity for us to see how well our campuses have been trained for your reunification and it, it's an extensive training and they did an awesome job.
And I'm sorry, I missed your name.
Jay Whitehead, Assistant Superintendent.
Mr. Whitehead, will that be for the kids in Jones Creek as well as Freeport, Clute, and Ridgewood?
Yes, right now, one of the things that's the challenge with this event is it is extremely rare. In fact, to my knowledge, I don't think we've ever had to bus students to another location for reunification, my 27th year here. So it, it would be for all students in any, any area because we want our people that are doing the reunification to be thoroughly trained and knowledgeable so they don't during a crisis go, okay, where are we taking these kids? Where are we taking those kids? So we have 19 campuses and again, we, we train, but this is not something that's commonplace.
And again, maybe the security gentleman could explain this a little bit further is that, I guess my concern is, is that you'll get the students there and I don't want to get into too much detail, but at the same time is, is that as the students arrive, are they going to be checked in? And then as they leave, are they going to be checked out or what's the, that, that's the chaos I'm concerned about.
Yes, sir. What we follow is what's called the I Love You Guys Foundation reunification process. They grew out of a tragic event out in the Midwest. And basically what happens is we bring the students in one area separated from the parents because the parents are going to want to grab their kids and we have an accountability piece where we have to account for them. So they will be bussed into one area that'll be controlled by law enforcement where the parents can't get into them. And as they get on the bus, the, the teachers for that class will have accountability for every one of their students and they will be loaded on the bus that way. Once they get to the reunification site, they'll be offloaded from the bus that way, loaded into one room that way, and they'll be put in rows by classroom and alphabetically. So the process, they'll be in a, a secure area inside of the Lake Jackson Civic Center in rows alphabetically. We'll have what's called greeters that will greet the parents on a different side of the Lake Jackson Civic Center, probably off the main parking lot. Well, they have to come in, greet themselves, produce their ID. That ID will then be given a sheet of paper that they have to fill out that gives the information about the students they pick up. That information will then be given to what we call a checker who will be in another area, which will check and verify that that parent can pick up that student based on our record saying, yep, that's authorized. Then that checker, after it's been verified by the verifier, the verifier will hand that information to a runner. A runner will take that information to the area where the student is located at, verify that that student. verify that that student knows this person that's coming to pick them up. Then that runner will take that person back to the, the paper, the student, to the reunifier. The reunifier will then be waiting there with the parent, and the reunifier will be the final one to do this, the last check to make sure the paper matches the student, matches the student's I D, and then they check it off on either a hard form or a electronic form if our computers are up, which they probably won't be. And then that parent and student will be notified out of a third area on the backside, back to their car, and then off to property.
How many, how many folks are you going to have doing it?
A lot. If it... It, it seems very complicated, but if you could have seen this mastery at work in Matt Griffith, it worked seamlessly because everybody has been trained, and it seems chaotic.
Yeah.
But once you get into your rhythm, it's good to go.
You don't have a dry run on there, do you?
Uh, we've actually had two so far since I've been the coordinator of safety and security for the district. We had one with the Clute event where we had to reunify the kids back to their parents, even though it was a false event. And then we had the Matt Griffith one. The Clute went very well. The Matt Griffith one, because of the lessons we learned from Clute, went outstanding. So I think we've got a good process, and we just need to have one facility to reunify from versus the, the current system that we have, which is four different facilities.
Mr. Whitehead and Mr. Morrow, uh, do you have a checklist system to, uh, notify us in case we have something going on that we can stop and start preparing for y'all instead of y'all just showing up and then it'd be a chaos, chaos for us to, uh, get things taken care of?
And that kind of goes into my question of, say, you're in the middle of the day, and do you have a particular room in the civic center, or I mean, what if there's events occurring? I mean, that's something we would need to talk about. What do we do at that point?
Okay, so the, the goal would be this, is we know that, um, you know, folks would have already, you know, rented your facilities, uh, and this would be, if used, would be a catastrophic event that's happening for our region. And it would not be something that would be happening very quickly. So our, our initial read would be the safety of the staff and the students. So whatever is going on, we're going to make whatever's going stop. We have central locations near every school where the kids immediately would go to, to shelter. And then if that event is catastrophic as we seem, we would then need to look, reunify them. So we're looking at forty-five minutes to an hour.
Okay.
So if we knew that was going to occur, you know, we would be, the team, Mr. Whitehead would be, because he would be the assistant commander on behalf of Mr. Massey, who would be managing the event at the school, would be making phone calls and saying, hey, look, you know, Lake Jackson, you know, we've had a major event. We're going to be reunifying from you, to you. We would know that very early into the event, and it's going to take us a minute to get bus drivers that are not currently on duty called back, get their buses, get to the shelter site, get the kids loaded up by class alphabetically, get them on the bus, get them transported with the police escort to where you're at. Have the police that show up at the event, the ones we're not using, go to the reunification site to be our site security, to keep all the parents and the medias and the looky-loos away until we can get the kids back to their parents. So it'd be a process and would take probably about an hour before we enact it, but we give you a notification and then to make arrangements.
Yeah, I just didn't want y'all to forget about us and, and then you show up and, and, because I know how my wife drive y'all's school buses over there.
As any contingency plan, do you plan to do any, uh, trials on, on, looking for any, uh?
Yeah, actually...
And how often?
Yeah, and I should let Mr. Morrow talk because he's the one who's come, come up with all the, uh, the plans for all of us to do dry run with our, our faculty this, before next school year starts. Uh, he's got a lot of, uh, creative ideas with, but, uh, as far as using the buses and using faculty, not, not with students, but with all the people that are, that are located there for the reunification.
So you would be needing site during once a year or something for that, uh, drill?
Well, luckily, we could probably run that entire drill outside, uh, of the site. And we would, we would work with you guys, obviously, when it's not being used. We're not going to run the drill when there's a wedding or something like that going on.
Our chief former police chief, Freeport?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for what you're doing here.
Yeah, thanks for being proactive, looking out for our kids.
Any other questions? If not, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve, uh, the, uh, civic center to be the unification site for students and parents in the event of an extreme catastrophic incident or event at B I S D site.
All right, need a second?
I'll second.
All right, a motion is second. Any further discussion? Any comment from the audience? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Glad we can do this.
Yep.
All right, then we're going to go on to item three, is discuss and consider closing the middle parking areas of the park route all day for the Festival of Lights on November twentieth. And Assistant Chief Sidebottom is going to talk about this.
Evening again. Uh, what I'd like to talk to you about is the Festival of Lights. Uh, as you all know, it's been, this will be its thirty-second year, of course, we missed last year. Back thirty-two years ago, we started, the population was around sixteen to eighteen thousand, and now it's almost thirty thousand. And with that being said, we have more people coming to the parade. And also, the center parking area there, actually, a lot of vehicles parked there, and it gets really congested, especially on the parade route in and of itself. Uh, I'm sure that many of you have been there. And so, uh, two years ago, we had an after-action review with all the security forces, the commanders, and we got together and we talked about hazards and all those things. And one thing we, we learned was that in order to mitigate for safety purposes, we probably needed to go...
You got a corner right in front of you.
Oh, where's that? Okay, there we go. Uh, can you enlarge that a little bit for me? All right, thank you. And so right in here on Circle Way, they have the center parking right here. And basically, what happens whenever the, the vehicles in the parade turn here and drive down this way, will people put their, uh, chairs behind the vehicles on both sides, and that, it actually condenses the, the route area, and I'm afraid that somebody could possibly get hurt. So my idea is to go ahead and reduce this based upon the conversation I have with all the other first responders. Take out this center parking area right here, and then that will enable the, the area to be wider. And what we can do is this center parking area that I'm talking about, taking the vehicles out, well, actually, that'll make clear observation for the people in the parade route. That way, they can see what's in front of them. We don't have to worry about a child running between the cars. And also, it takes those vehicles from sticking out past the parking area, and we can make that an actual sitting position. Everybody can bring their lawn chairs, stand, or whatever they want. We actually get more people in there to actually see the parade. So that's what I think we should do. I also, uh, went and talked to all...
You said, you said taking out. How, how are you going to take?
Well, basically, don't let anyone park there.
Okay, got you.
Yeah, stop all the vehicles from parking just in the center area. Now, they can park on the curbside on both sides. We're not stopping any of that parking. I'm just trying to prohibit or prevent any type of injury if someone runs out in front of vehicles. All the right things are there. You're talking about darkness, children, chaos, loud noises, and all those things are just a, a good mix for something to go wrong. And so what I want to do is move all these vehicles out of this area. And like I said, you can bring, uh, all the people to watch the parade right in that area, and I think they'd actually enjoy it even much better than the cars in that area. I also went and talked to, because I know this might be one of your concerns. So before then, I went and talked to all these business owners for them. I'd venture to say ninety percent of those business owners I talked to, and not one, thought it was a bad idea. So basically, some of me actually said that it was a great idea. So with that being said, I had some business owners that actually said we should probably start blocking it off Friday night or early Saturday because some people actually come and bring their car here and park, and then abandon it for the whole day just so they can get a good spot that night. So what I'd really like to do is actually start Friday night or Saturday morning and start coning all this area off for when the parade actually happens. That way, it would be safe for everyone.
So are you proposing in areas like this where you can park here?
Yes.
And you can park on this side?
Yes, sir.
But you can't park in the middle?
That's correct.
So, okay.
Yes. I mean, we don't want to prohibit all the people from coming downtown. Obviously, businesses are open, but...
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask you to clarify, how you, I mean, calling off, we have business that's going to...
Actually, I talked to those businesses, and over fifty percent are closed on Saturday. And then the others that are open, they're okay with it. Uh, because, uh, like I mentioned earlier, some people just park there. They're not doing business anyway. Actually, that, by parking and leaving their car, they're actually costing that business, uh, business because there's, they're taking away a parking space.
So you're going to have an alternate plan? Maybe they can go down and through the alleys or something?
Well, what I recommend, they could park at any public location. Uh, and also, one of the areas we talked about, since we're probably not going to have a carnival, is let them park in the civic center parking lot.
Yeah, so if you look in front of you, Mallory brought the map. Um, and so what, the one we're talking about is where the carnival used to be, the large parking lot for the civic center. So we would now allow that for additional Festival of Lights parking. And this would be the, this layout. Everything would be the same except we're removing the carnival and adding more parking since we're now going to be taking away these parking spots.
You're not talking about the business owner, you're talking about?
But business owners, people could park there as well, so even if they were going to a restaurant or something. It's all walkable.
Okay, that's good right there. See right here, uh, this parking right here is not going to be affected. This parking right here is not going to be affected. What's going to be affected is this area right here. And especially, see this choke point right here? That is really a hazard because it narrows down. And like I said, people are sitting behind these vehicles, and that's a really tight turn to get around. And so what we're just trying to do is mitigate any type of hazard. And again, we want the people to enjoy themselves. We don't want to worry about somebody trying, uh, to run out in traffic and get ran over, trying to prevent that.
Again, just for clarification, is the street is not going to be blocked off. You're just going to cone off the center parking.
That's correct.
Side, side street parking is still going to be allowed. We're going to have the additional parking available at the civic center because the carnival is not going to be able, they can't meet their commitment.
Right, now this, now, obviously, when the actual parade starts, we're going to shut down everything, so movement stops.
Right, I understand, but during the day...
Prior to that, uh, vehicle could traverse the downtown area however they want. They just won't be able to allow, to be able to park here all the way up. Now, that goes all the way to the banks, uh, near the civic center, where all the center parking.
Is that the only area that you're going to be blocking off? Because also, from, uh, Oak all the way down Circle Way to that way, it usually gets pretty hectic in that area also.
Yes, sir, that's exactly what I'm talking about. We're going to, uh, can you expand it for me, please? I want to block all of the center parking from the ten block...
Got you.
Ten block all the way to the banks.
We're on the same page now.
Yes, sir, thank you. So from here all the way down.
I thought you were just blocking the first part, but now we're blocking the third.
You'll have somebody out there Saturday morning putting cones and tapes where they can't park.
Friday, if you let us do it Friday night, yeah. Matter of fact, I actually talked to one business, and, uh, the employee there said, well, when we close, we'll be more than happy to put your cones out there for us. So, I mean, it's, it's not a, it's not, I mean, I really believe it's a good buy-in. All the businesses understand why we're doing it, because again, it's all about safety.
And people can sit there, but no parking cars?
Yes, sir, they can sit there, bring your lawn chairs, uh, stand, whatever they want to do. That space can be allowed for the public, just no vehicles.
Are you going to barricade, you said?
Uh, that's what we're, the cones, and also, I've talked to Chief Kibdo. We're trying to maybe get some, uh, cones and some tape, rope or something like that to kind of barricade that off. But we got to do it on both sides, because if we don't, somebody's going to park there.
I'm talking about, you said kids running back and forth, so we don't want kids running from the center part where they're sitting across, somebody parked on the other side.
We would like all the parents to manage their children, but unfortunately, we can't always do that. So what we're trying to do is make a safe place for them, but ultimately, they got to do it for parents.
The challenge is, is that, because people do park in the center, and they do have their kids or whatever, and they're sitting in front of, in their chairs, and they're moving back and forth. The challenge is, yes, we don't want the kids going back and forth, but the biggest challenge is the vehicles are parked there, and it restricts the view of the people driving floats. Right. So with the trucks gone, it'll be easier to see. When a kid does start to step out, that'll be easier to see them, and so forth, so...
A little less chaotic.
A little less chaotic for the drivers.
Do you have that, those pictures of trucks I sent you on the email?
I do not know.
Okay, well, basically, uh, I would, I would ask you all to drive down that area, and look, there's big trucks. They stick past the parking lines. And so what we want to do is actually use those lines as the guide for where we put our cones in. Anything, and we want to tell them to stay behind the cones.
The only thing I was thinking is maybe roping that area off, so you avoid that kid. They know where, where not to step off to. That's the only thing I was thinking of. Not, not to change what you're asking for, it's just additional security. You know, if you put a post and just put a rope all the way across, so people don't...
Well, we're going to try to, to, uh, manage it as best we can, but, uh, you know, people are people. They're going to do what they want to do, and we can't manage those, uh, children. Hopefully, their parents will keep an eye on them and, and keep them back in the area, but I, I can't guarantee that they won't cross the line.
But we'll try.
I'd like to add too, I think it's a great idea. Brian and I have, have, uh, from the law enforcement's perspective, uh, together thirty years almost, myself twenty-six, uh, of working this parade every year. And it, and it's just gotten so big, and, uh, with cars parking, uh, in the center and on both sides, we struggle just to get the apparatus and the vehicles down that road, uh, without running into a car or a person. But that center parking with the, the darkness and the fact that people dart in and out between vehicles to go to the other side of the road as well. Uh, it's, it's been a worry of ours for years because it's gotten just so big. And it's great that it's popular. Uh, I just don't want to see anything ever tainted. And I think this is a proactive measure, uh, for safety that...
I like a good idea.
I'd like us to pursue.
All right.
And I will say, Mallory is here, so if you guys have any questions about the Festival of Lights as it pertains to this item, she's more than happy to answer as well. It's okay if not, but she's here if you have any.
Mallory, the, the route's the same, start at West Way, go down and around, and end at West Way on the other, the other direction?
So I'm sure you've already, you're already filled up on the parade as far as people requested to be in the parade?
Uh, it's not full yet.
Okay.
No, we still have some spots open. It's over half-full.
How many are you going to allow?
We allow up to seventy-five entrants. Some of those entries, though, are car clubs that are allowed up to ten cars, so...
Seventy-five total cars?
Seventy-five total entries.
Entries.
Okay.
Assistant Chief Sidebottom, have you, uh, thought about reaching out to, uh, other local departments to, uh, kind of help assist you in some of this traffic? Sort of like they do during a fair, you know, they sent out a email to, uh, try to help out. Uh, I can kind of maybe volunteer.
Yes, sir, I thank you for asking that question. I've asked, uh, Constable, uh, I've asked, uh, West Columbia Police Department, B I S D P D, uh, Brazos Port College Police Department, Angleton Police Department, Sheriff's Office, Clute, Freeport, and a couple others. And they're all going to assist.
Great job.
Good.
Thank you.
All right.
And we are looking for guidance on if Friday night is okay, or if you want us to wait until Saturday to start the middle lane closure.
Probably Saturday morning because we have, even, downtown is really busy on Fridays and...
Can I, uh, inject here? I'm talking Friday as in really early Saturday morning after midnight timeframe, probably. The reason I'm saying that, because night shift, once it starts, uh, the crowd leaves, night shift could, we could ask them to put the cones out.
Okay. Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay, all right, so if there's any more discussion, I'll take a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to, uh...
With direction on the Friday?
Yes. I could make the motion to close the Miller of the parking area of downtown for the parade route, uh, starting from twelve o'clock, uh, Saturday morning until midnight Saturday night.
Last second.
Yeah, we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, thank you. All right. Okay, item four is report on further, uh, school zone traffic improvements for the intersection of the... I cannot pronounce that word. Dahlia and Entusa. Anyway. Chief.
So we visited this, I think, a few weeks ago. Uh, we put an officer out there for observation. He came back with a recommendation that, uh, a crossing guard was definitely needed, uh, and I would, I would agree with him. So after working the, uh, crossing for a while, uh, the further discussion was that we took the school zone and extend it down Entusa, past that curve, knowing now that all we could do is assign to extend it, and that's fine. And in the future, consider putting a, a lighted, uh, control device there for the school zone. Uh, I'm also recommending, um, uh, crosswalk striping. Uh, we had had some discussion whether it was necessary to do just one way, I mean, two ways, We had had some discussion whether it was necessary to do just one way, I mean, two ways or the whole intersection. But what we found is three is definitely necessary just because we do have some parking down Anchoosa on the north side of that intersection. For older kids that don't attend the elementary, but that are bussed from that location somewhere else, so they need to cross on the north end of that intersection, west to east. So if we're gonna do three, my recommendation is just crosswalk every direction and I think we'll have it.
Now, the striping will help them also to keep from doing the crossing through the intersection like.
Forty-five degree cross.
Yes, keep them from from going diagonally and it and it also designates that area as a crosswalk officially. It's a just a safer measure for everyone.
Yeah, so I I was at Traffic Commission when this first got brought up and I drop my kids off every day at Brandon in the morning. And I fully agree with with every one of these and I and I grew up right there on on Roale Oak Street and that Blue Bonnet Park is really tall, really high. You can't see around the curve as well and smaller cars and things like that and anything we can do, I think, slow it down especially in light of the school moving to that other side of the big lot there, I think is a very good idea. So I would fully support that and I'm happy to move the council when it's when it's time.
I was just gonna ask, since we got school district here, y'all have anything to say, Ed?
Did y'all, I'm sorry, did y'all measure how far you wanted extended past Dahlia, do you, can you get that? Because in the ordinance, I have to say a certain amount of feet.
Oh.
So if you could get that.
I can certainly get that for you.
Be down past the other end of the curve, I presume at least that far you got a spot. Yes, yes, and I'll check some of the drone footage as well and we could probably get a pretty good measurement, if not, in front of this particular location for you.
Perfect.
Easily done, I'll have it this week.
All right, well, the way this is written, it's not, what should be is giving direction for an ordinance, okay, so if everybody is in compliance, is okay with that? Give that direction?
Yes.
All right, so we'll move forward with that and so.
Thanks for the follow-up.
All right, that'd be my question, so we don't need an ordinance for one, do we need an ordinance for three? What what do we need to do formally to get that striked? Yes. Is that part of the ordinance, Sherri, I I actually don't know.
Yes, sir.
So, crosswalk striping is just a warning that it is a crosswalk, so you don't really need an ordinance for that, it'll it can just happen.
Okay, great, perfect.
So we're only gonna have one crossing guard there, correct?
Yes.
Correct. That's current plan, yes, okay, so we've got, we've given the direction, we'll have an ordinance come back to us and that'll finalize everything.
Thank you and thanks Chief for staffing that.
Yeah, appreciate y'all stepping up and wanting to to observe and give us feedback, that was really helpful. We have item five is discuss and review the food inspection program, David.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, with your permission, Mr. Mayor, may I make a small comment on the award for the natural gas vehicle America? Natural gas is clean, it's affordable, it's available and it's renewable and on city business, I have traveled as far as Oklahoma City, Biloxi, Mississippi. And Amarillo, Texas and back utilizing that technology. I think that the city support is is very well deserved.
Fueling stations and everything?
Absolutely, yes, sir. So now onto the agenda as posted, this is our summary for the last quarter of health inspections. As you can see, Leslie has been quite busy, she has inspected one, she has completed one hundred percent, can you go to the actual PowerPoint? There we go, second page. She has completed one hundred percent of all first inspections for the year twenty twenty-one and ninety-three percent of second inspections for that time period. Of that, she has found great compliance with the majority of the establishments. And those that have had need to go back, she works with them to make sure that that after identification of deficiencies, that they can be brought into a passing score. And she works very hard to make sure that that the establishments are safe and available for our public. She has responded to a couple of closures, one of our restaurants is still closed, but not because of health inspection reasons, because we found a deficiency in the ceiling structure, so that is being repaired. That is Popeyes, but they are actively working to get that taken care of.
What is the problem with Popeyes?
They had a cracking in their roof system.
Okay.
So they had water leaking down into the restaurants, but that was and when when investigated, it was found that they had some deficiencies in the actual roof decking.
That's where it's come out?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
She is well on track to have completed second inspections by the end of this next month and she will respond to complaints as necessary and as needed. Other projects we are working on, we did not get back into the school systems, into Brazoswood High School and into RASCO for health-related items. For educational purposes, neither in the years twenty twenty, twenty twenty or twenty nineteen. We anticipate being back in, sorry, twenty nineteen, we did, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, we did not because of the pandemic. But we anticipate having that program back up and running for the spring semesters in those schools, as well as reaching out to Lake Jackson Intermediate and their culinary department.
Okay. Leslie, how's it going?
It's going good, Mayor, it's been busy, been a little busy.
Yeah. So what are you seeing out in the field, are you seeing anything major or just anything out of usual?
The one thing that I've seen are the struggle, the struggles that I have seen are the businesses not having employees. I have literally sat in one of the establishments and had the man or the owner in tears because he just can't, he can't get the help.
Right.
And he he at this point is saying, you know, I'll just wash my hands and be done and I said, well, we really, we really don't want to do that, so let us see what we can do to help you. Of course, I don't have staff to give you, but I will do whatever I can to help you, so and we did and he was he was very thankful for it.
So when you when you do have to close a facility down, my understanding is y'all make yourselves available to take a call anytime to come back and do a re-inspect?
That is correct, yes, sir.
To try to get them back in operation as quick as possible.
Yeah, so even if it's not Leslie herself, that is something that David or another member of his staff can go do just to get them open, so that Leslie can go back later and do their official inspection. But we can go in and allow them to open if they've corrected whatever the problem was that shut them down to begin with.
Yeah, so we give them the number for the non-emergency dispatch number and they can call us out as needed or we've even given our cell phone numbers. And we do make ourselves available regardless of the time of day or on weekends to make sure that we can go over those items that were deficient, that would keep them closed. Make sure that they're in compliance and then Leslie would go back and do a follow-up inspection and provide them with a rating.
I will say I've had feedback from two of the owners of the restaurants that have been closed and they were very happy with the way that you guys have worked with them. And just your responsiveness on getting them back open, so good feed, good feedback in a bad situation.
Thank you.
So the hundred thousand, hundred thousand dollar question is, is do you feel, understanding that the the commitment and the laws that we have to follow in your roles, do you feel like we're being able to comply with those and meet the expectations that the committee should have for us as a city?
Yes, sir, I do. I'm not gonna say that I don't utilize my coworkers, because I do.
All right.
There have been times where I've had to, you know, ask some of them, hey, do you mind helping out, you know, step in to do this or that, but for the most part, yes, sir.
Well, one thing, the reason I ask is, is one thing is that, you know, it's because we do talk about when you do have to close, you have to repeat offenders, is that you have to take time out of your normal routine of doing your annuals or semi-annuals. And you have to go back and 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 we've talked about it in the past and the option I think is still always out there is is that we can, if it if the demand is high enough, we can bring in contract to do those, you know, re-inspects. We're bringing a contractor to do that, so that's always out there, I think. And I know Modesto and I have talked about that several times and I know it's on in council, we've talked about it years ago too. So it's, I think, again, it's always something we're always concerned about, that we wanna be sure that we're doing the inspections that we're required to do and we meet the expectations and and also with the resources we have, not working you to death.
So one thing to keep in mind, laws, rules and regulations are all minimum standards by which we must follow. And the minimum standard set forth by the state is that we visit and and rate each food establishment twice in in a one-year period. We do go back in there, obviously, follow up with with complaints, follow up as needed with with other issues and items, which does put us into some establishments more than others.
Right.
I I wouldn't necessarily say that, you know, repeat offenders, they just might need a little more care and.
Or some more direction or some help, yeah.
That's right, but at the end of the day, you know, we we verify that they all meet those minimum standards as set forth. We don't have the ability without obviously writing our own ordinances and raising that bar to to state, you know, we're gonna do inspections more often or we expect more from them other than those minimum standards.
Do you have any other city in our general area that have any ordinances that are in above and beyond what state requirements are?
No, I don't, but I also have not looked into that, I'd be happy to look into that.
Outside of your normal inspection routine, how many complaints are y'all typically getting in a quarter that you're having to kind of interject in your regular schedule? Is that a common thing or uncommon?
Or even weekly, like how many complaints do you get weekly?
Just out of curiosity.
I I would, I would not say weekly, I would say a month, I probably get a handful at least a month.
Now, those complaints can come from a number of different avenues and every avenue we have to investigate, it could, it could come from a employee, a former employee, a patron. It could come from somebody on staff having seen something in the course of their daily business or even on their personal time. And so we do investigate those at the earliest opportunity. We not just, and at that time, we don't just investigate what is the basis for the complaint, but we also take a general overview as to the condition of the restaurant. And in some cases, we have found that from one inspection to that additional visit, that the establishment no longer meets those minimum standards, at which time Leslie addresses those.
David?
Yes, sir.
I'm sitting here looking at your scoring system, could you explain to me the excellent, good and satisfaction?
That's probably a a question better suited for Leslie, if I can turn it over to her.
So anything from a ninety to a hundred is excellent, anything from eighty to eighty-nine is good and then everything below that is.
Okay, so how we get to the points?
There's a sheet, an inspection sheet that I have from Tefers and there's a section that I count off three points. It doesn't matter if I walk through the entire restaurant and there's ten dirty tables, I can only count it one time, so that's three points for ten dirty tables.
Okay.
If I walk in and I see a half a dozen roaches, I can only count off one point, it doesn't matter if there's one or twelve.
Oh, man.
I know, I know, I understand, believe me, cuz there's times where I'm like, really should should go a little bit lower, but I can't, I can't do anything about that.
Okay.
But if you see, but if you see a gross infestation, you can close them and tell them, and you don't see a current.
Pest control.
Control, pest control, you can.
Correct, that is what is recommended by state, by Tefers. If I walk in and there's an infestation, I do not even do an inspection, I immediately speak to the manager, let them know that I'm going to have to shut them down. I ask for their recent pest control, if it was recent and there's still an infestation, I'm still going to shut them down and have pest control come back. If it wasn't recent and there's an infestation, then I want an explanation as to why they're not getting it done on a regular basis.
And at that point, once pest control has been established, they would call us back, we would go verify pest control's been done and then Leslie would go back and do her rating inspection.
Also, I see on your visit, Leslie, have some of them have seven, six, five, and then some of them have two and three.
So now, keep in mind that how many times was she at an establishment that she wrote a report? Now, the report could be based on the initial inspection and then a second visit could be to address certain deficiencies on that, even though they were given a rating and they remain remained open. In some cases, that's based upon a complaint, which would be an additional visit.
Right.
We have one establishment where we went back because the air conditioning systems weren't working or they were dripping condensation onto areas of food preparation or patron areas. One establishment where we went back because the ventilation system over the cook line wasn't working and the restaurant was full of smoke. So these are all things that would give us opportunity to go into a restaurant with merit and have a look around. So a report was written, which is what generates those twos, threes, fours, sevens in that one case, but that does not necessarily mean that the establishment was in a condition that it needed to be closed, just items needed to be addressed.
So do you have the authority to just go in and just inspect the restaurant or do you have to have a complaint before you can go in?
Our bi-annual inspections are based upon the authority to go in and do those inspections without without pre-notification. We don't tell them we're coming on a certain day, we don't schedule with them, we go in and we do those those inspections. Now, I don't believe that there's anything in the law that says we can't go and do those more often than twice a year. It's gonna come down to manpower, it's gonna come down to what's the purpose and are we equally providing that across the board or are we singling out or.
One or two businesses.
Identifying frequent flyers, cuz that's not in the law either.
So your department is just two?
Our health department really consists of Leslie and the additional code enforcement officers which may assist her.
And she do two on a six establishment?
You're doing all these inspections.
Yes, sir.
Some of them take longer than others.
Five days a week.
Yes, sir.
So let me clarify here, I wanna make sure that you guys know that you guys do a great job for the resources that you have. My biggest concern is that some of these restaurants that you find, what you find is in such a bad shape. That did not happen overnight or over a month's time and that's my concern cuz we are exposing our citizens to food that they're eating in unsanitary conditions. For a long time before these these things come to light and that's my concern, so. In your opinion, if that's the best we can do, then that's the best we can do, if not, you need to let the council know that what we can do to help you keep our citizens safe. Because last thing is I wanna end up in the emergency room because I'm sick during the COVID time and get COVID, okay? So that's a lot of citizens feel that way. So that's my concern, so I know you guys have done a great job and you can't ask you to do any more than that, cuz I mean, with the with the staff of one. You know, all these restaurants and other businesses that you have to inspect and the time that it takes and the follow-ups and all that, so I'm very sensitive about that. So that's the reason why I wanna make sure that you guys speak up and because we wanna, the ultimate goal is to keep our citizenry safe. And and that's what I wanna try to get at.
So I I would really ask the question then to to the council, because once again, we have a minimum standard by which we have to follow and by all metrics, we are following that minimum standard. Does council, would council be advocating for increased enforcement above and beyond that minimum standard?
What is your, what are your thoughts and recommendations on that, cuz you guys are the ones that are in there kind of in the trenches, so to speak, do you think that there needs to be higher standards in some areas? I mean, we would rely on your judgment.
So I will say, we've all spoken together, I'll field this one for him. So we have all spoken with Modesto as well, in a dream world, we've discussed this at length, Leslie has very high standards. I would dare say higher than any health inspector we have had previously. So the attitude and sort of the expectation with restaurants is already changing with her in that position, the more they see her, the more they know. They have to at least maintain the standard twice a year and they don't know when she's coming, so it's already gonna change the habits that they, you know, are putting out there. But in a dream world, we would prefer two Lesleys to where we could visit the restaurants more often. And so and that could be, we could set up a whole program where if, you know, they don't get an excellent or they don't meet a certain threshold at one of their inspections, maybe we revisit them again. Or it triggers two more inspections that year or something, but with only having one Leslie, we, that like they said, they can really. But with only having one Leslie, we, that like they said, they can really only do the minimum state standards. So we would prefer to have, to touch those restaurants, visit them more often than we currently are, just because I believe the more they see us, the more that will change their attitude, their perception, how they feel about hygiene and cleanliness within their restaurants. I've worked in restaurants my whole life, and my parents were always an excellent, but that was because in my city, we inspected three to four times a year, so they never knew when they were coming.
Well, my feeling is, if you don't have the people to go around inspecting what you're supposed to be inspecting, you got two, two of y'all are doing all this, is that right?
One of her.
One of you are doing all of this.
Yes. So to do any more, we would need another body.
Well, you, what I'm trying to say is, you can put all the standards you want out there, but if you don't have people going to make sure they're doing those standards, those standards aren't worth a dirt.
Exactly.
So I'm more concerned about getting her some help in budget time down the road. That's my concern.
That's exactly.
Like I said, you can put all what you wanted, but you don't have people looking. Big deal.
I would also state that if we were to do that, go above and beyond the minimum state standard, then we would probably need an ordinance which would outline what that process would be, what those metrics would be that would trigger those additional visits.
Do you want a bunch of policy stuff, or do you want people to help you get it done?
Both. Well, we wanna do our job, Mr. Buehl. We definitely, we definitely wanna do our job.
Job doing better, right?
I'm just stating that, that an additional body would have to go with a policy on how to utilize that additional body.
What we need most of all first.
And this is something that could wait until strategic planning time. It's something that could be discussed as a whole with all of our other personnel requests. I do believe it's something that we'll need to talk about then, so, but if it's something that you guys want us to look into now, if you feel like with the information we presented to you, you want something moving quicker, Modesto has looked at the numbers. We could either, we have two options. We could either pull money down from reserves, which he does not recommend. It's a bad habit to start, but we also believe that we will have savings.
Okay.
In the general fund.
Getting too far now.
Yeah.
Are we getting off?
Yeah.
Okay.
This is the part where if you wanna talk about it, we'll put it on the next.
Make it an agenda item?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I do want, just so we know, these are not all of the establishments. I do have schools. I mean, I do have daycares. I do have mobile vending units. I do have farmer's markets.
So she has even more.
So there's even more to this.
I know what you mean.
We're sold with just what's on the list here.
Just so you're aware.
And you know, and these restaurants are not just small mop-up restaurants. We're talking about some of these restaurants that have been recently closed or have, I mean, you know, like Houston says, two, three-star restaurants, you know? And that concerns me, because if, if what we are seeing in two visits is that that's such a bad condition that you have to shut them down, then we have to provide them additional help, so we never get there. Because a sign is posted, says excellent, and you may be the bottom of the bowl at the time, at times.
Leslie, cut into the chase. Do you think that you would benefit from an additional staff member to help you split this load up?
Definitely.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion or direction? Do you want to, the direction would be is that we could put this back on, we put an agenda item to discuss options to make a personnel increase immediately or as soon as possible, or if that's not the interest, well, then we could move it off to the strategic plan when we start talking about setting up a plan for budget, next year's budget.
Mr. Mayor, I would say we do it sooner than that, because this is public health we're talking about.
Yeah, let's put it on the next agenda.
If options exist that are reasonable, we should at least hear them.
Look at it, look at it anyway.
Sure. All right, so we'll put it on the next agenda to, staff will bring back options on how we could find another position, the different options that we could to do that, and we'll make a decision then.
And good job raising the standards.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you again.
Move on to item six, resolution to amend Utility Capital Improvement Fund for repair of driveway and sanitary sewer at fire station number two for a hundred and ten thousand dollars. This is going to be.
Do you have any read it?
We'll talk about it, then you can read the resolution, or the changes.
Sal, go ahead.
Do you want me to go ahead?
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, I tried to explain to you in my memorandum to you concerning the reason why this thing has been requested now. This is not a project that was expected, but just like everything else that happens in utility and water lines and sanitary sewer lines, it becomes an action, and it needs to be a remedial action, that needs to be taken into account. This sanitary sewer is right in front of the fire station number two. The fire marshal brought it to my attention. We then immediately moved on that, trying to determine the consequence for that pavement failure. Originally suspecting a drainage line had created some problems before. It wasn't the case. We, we had to go back in there, do a video inspection of it, which proved that there was an actual breakage of the, or crushing of the pipeline underneath the, underneath the pavement area there where that created the, that created that soil, the base to be eroded into that sanitary sewer line. And that, that particular break had already initiated, very, some years back, because I heard that some of our fire department operations had been trying to fill that, that developing void in the past there. So it was a thing that had been growing. We asked for, because we felt it was an emergency type of project, we went the proposal route that gives us that possibility of declaring. We, we, after the, after the video, we knew that the only way that we could, that we could approach this project was through a pipe bursting process, which limited the number of contractors that could, you know, that are specialized. So we brought these two people that we had had previous dealings with, they're on projects similar to this. And the one that came in, that gave us the best proposal was for eighty-eight thousand dollars. And which is the one that we would like to have you approve with this amendment to the, to the utility fund. There's also fifteen thousand dollars associated with replacing the pavement that is now required, that's gonna have to be removed in order to get to a point repair of that particular crushed pipe area. So we will have to replace that one, fifteen thousand dollars, and the three thousand dollars in addition to that one has already been expended in the video of that particular line.
Sal, for the cost of a hundred and ten thousand dollars, is this a fairly substantial fix to the solution, a more permanent solution?
It is. Pipe bursting is the proper solution. It's the one that trenchless construction trying to eliminate or reduce the amount of restoration involved, payments, et cetera. So it is, it is a tried and true way of doing trenchless.
But this repair should last for quite some time.
It should, it should. We've done that thing recently in a project about, on the Lake Forest area. That's what we actually did. So.
Okay. You go ahead and read the resolution.
Whereas the City of Lake Jackson City Council adopted a budget for the City of Lake Jackson, Texas for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, and September twenty twenty-one. And whereas the city is responsible for maintaining public infrastructure, and whereas, after an assessment by engineering staff, fire station number two has been found to have pavement subsoil erosion and a drainage culvert failure that is in need of immediate repair.
I'll take motions on the resolution. We can still discuss after.
Move for approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A second. Okay, any other discussions or questions? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Resolution to amend the Equipment Replacement Fund for the replacement of three motorcycle handheld radar units for the police department in the amount of seven thousand five hundred dollars. Go ahead and talk about it, and we'll do the resolution. Okay. I believe the last time that we replaced these handhelds, twenty thirteen or twenty fourteen, we're having, of course, some repair issues, our electronic. And of course, a very important part of what the motorcycle patrolmen have, they don't have moving radars mounted. These are handhelds they use for monitoring speed. And somehow it did not get on the equipment replacement for this year. So that's what we're asking to do, is add it to equipment replacement, and seventy-five hundred dollars.
Are those stock or handhelds?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, I'll send them, yes, yeah.
Okay. And so this is, this is funded, and we just didn't put it in the right place? It's, it's, yes, sir. It's in the CIP.
Equipment replacement.
It's an equipment replacement.
Yes, sir. Yep.
Okay. All right, go ahead and read the resolution.
Whereas the City of Lake Jackson City Council adopted a budget for the City of Lake Jackson, Texas for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, and September twenty twenty-one. And whereas the city's police department utilizes three motorcycle handheld radars as one of the primary tools for traffic officers to ensure public safety. And whereas these three motorcycle handheld radars have exceeded their useful life expectancy, are out of warranty, and are no longer able to be repaired due to age.
Yeah, you can go ahead and make motions, and then we'll have discussion, some more discussion.
Move for approval, the Equipment Replacement Fund for the replacement of three motorcycle handheld radar units for the police department in the amount of seven thousand five hundred.
Second.
A motion and a second, and then further discussion, question? Anybody? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you.
You got one bike running, when the other two gonna be on the ground?
Fortunately, very quickly, we will be full with the recent promotions and with filling in the ranks. And as soon as we get Officer Oscar Mendoza to motorcycle training, we'll get him out on the bike. Officer Gad Boys is already trained and just looking for the spot, so.
One of us making a living behind my house on that, on this way.
They've been really busy lately, really busy. They've done a good job, yeah.
All right. Got item eight, discussing, consider resolution approving an exemption for taxation for the City of Lake Jackson of the, of a portion of the appraised value of qualified property damaged at least fifteen percent by Hurricane Nicholas.
Would you like me to read the resolution first?
Yeah, that's fine.
This is a resolution of the City of Lake Jackson, Texas, approving an exemption from taxation by the City of Lake Jackson of a portion of the appraised value of qualified property damage at least fifteen percent by Hurricane Nicholas, providing an effective date and providing for finding a proper meeting and notice. So according to the Texas tax code, city council is allowed to adopt a temporary exemption of property taxes on properties where the damage is at least fifteen percent. David, I'm sure can talk about those properties. He has met with them and identified a couple that we have within city limits. So they could apply for this and be approved if council thought that was something of value.
In your package, you'll see the chart, and you'll see the listing of the properties that we know of. And you'll see that some of them are at a hundred percent, and because it's gonna cost more to repair them than the value of the home. So this will give those taxpayers the opportunity, if they want to pursue this, to get some adjustment on their appraisal for their taxes. Anybody have any questions?
No, sir.
All right, well, I'll take a motion then.
I would make a motion to approve exemption from taxation by the City of Lake Jackson of a portion of the appraised value of qualified property damage of at least fifteen percent by Hurricane Nicholas.
Second.
All right, I'll give it to Buehl, since he's sitting next to me here. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. All right, item nine, it's going to be award a CDBG contract for Azalea Street Extension of Circle Way to soil construction in the amount not to exceed a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. Sal.
Okay, this, this project is the last of the CDBG for this, for this year. The other portion went for the ramps that are being almost finished along several streets, Yopon and Lake Road. So this is the remaining portion of it. We are already running sort of late on this one. We are asking for extensions on this particular project, so we can complete it sometime before the end of the year, hopefully. On this, there are, we had the soil construction. You see, we had a fairly, fairly good competition in this particular one. Surprisingly, we even had one from the one that's gonna be doing the downtown project. He wasn't, he wasn't successful, but Soil of Freeport is the one that, in this particular case, got, got the bid itself. The monies that were, that were allotted for this particular CBG, there was probably about a hundred and four thousand dollars on the street itself. And we had about a hundred and thirty-some odd thousand on the ramps. So even though it came over the, the budget that was programmed for this particular one, the ramp monies that were saved can be applied to this particular portion. The shortages on this particular project there, along with possible some of the sidewalk program funds that we do have, that we have not expended yet. So we are able to cover the, the budget shortage on this particular project. So we are recommending a warrant to do in this particular portion of the job.
And if we, if we don't approve this, the CDBG funds will go away, and we don't, we're not eligible for.
For another year, yeah. Skips every year.
Yeah. So, yeah, we may have to pull some money from the sidewalk program, but, you know.
Always the base bid, so for a part. The spread of them.
The spread of them was, well, for, yeah, except for the first two, and that's typically where you find the competition, the locals. Yeah, you saw, you see.
And I guess Matagorda, they, they didn't wanna do it, so they just throwed out a.
Matagorda was, is trying to get into the market, and, you know, so he was, you know, getting his feelers for, for our market, because he wants to compete here. So this would be a good place for him to look at, see what the other ones in the local area.
Lower his feelers.
Did all these guys see each other's bids?
No.
No.
They closed bids.
Yeah, this is a closed bid, yeah.
But they can see them now, right?
Yes. What, the bid tabulation, after the project, I mean, after we are warned, we provide the bid tabulation to everyone, so they're aware of what in the market is going for.
And again, what we've always seen is that the, the local contractors, they have the benefit of, their equipment's local, their people are local. They don't have to bring people in, they don't have to bring equipment in.
That's right.
And so, you know, again, like Matagorda County, you know, I mean, Matagorda Construction, what they would like to see is they get their foot in the door, and then they have equipment here, and they can continue to bid on projects.
That is correct.
So that's, that's how these guys work. But anyway, all right, any other questions on this?
I have a random, well, I'll just ask Sal later. It's not, it's not really.
Okay.
I was just sort of wondering out loud, not, not aloud, but it is now, to myself. So it's a ten thousand dollar difference between soil and matula, but matula's gonna do it faster. And how you might, how you might go about weighing, this project certainly doesn't require.
It doesn't require, yes, it is, yeah, it is, it is not of that importance.
But do we factor that in from time to time?
It could be factored, yeah, it could be factored.
It's a good question. All right, all right, I'll take motions on this item, if there is one.
I move to approve the award of the CDBG contract for Azalea Street Extension at Circle Way to Soil Construction in an amount not to exceed a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars.
Second.
Not to exceed a hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, I was gonna say, there's a discrepancy from, is it a hundred and thirty-eight thousand?
Oh, I'm sorry, what it says on, I'm reading the.
Paper.
The paper. What should it be for?
What is this?
Well, it's, it's, the contract's one, one thirty-eight. The actual bid is one thirty-eight. We asked for additional twelve thousand, just to cover any incidents.
Any accidents.
So it's not to exceed a hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
Yeah, that's my motion. That's my motion, a hundred and fifty thousand. Thank you.
All right. And I need a second. A second. All right, any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Authorized city manager to execute a contract with AVI SPL LLC through DIR Contract DIRTSO three eight seven five for an update audio visual system for the municipal court building in the amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars. for an update audio visual system for municipal court building in the amount not to exceed $75,000. So this is Sherry.
And Dorothy.
And Dorothy.
So, yes.
And Pam.
Pam's volunteering, she just walked up there.
Pam's, Pam's here because I wanna say that we have a treat tonight. Dorothy Zavala was probably the first person I hired after I came here. So she's been here like 29, going on 30 years now. So, and this is probably the first time she's been to a council meeting. So I'm gonna make her come up here and talk about this. She, she's been my blessing for 30 years because she handles all municipal court without much supervision from me. She takes care of everything. She's been a wonderful employee.
Wow.
All right. There you go.
There's your introduction.
Hi there.
Hello.
For those that don't know me, I don't think anybody knows me. No, JP does, hi there.
Yes, I do.
Dorothy Zavala, the court clerk of the city of Lake, for your municipal court. Sherry's gonna help me with this one too, right? We are asking.
Cause she works right next door to you.
I know, I know.
The video system, a little story of what we have. When they first built our updated municipal court back in 2008, that is when we installed our audio video system. So it's not been changed, I take that back. The audio was changed not too long ago. The video has not since 2008. Since then, it's starting to fall apart on us. It's, at this point since September, it stopped operating altogether. So we are having to go back to the way we used to show evidence during court, during trials, which is hard copy paper. If they need to present a video, they're looking at somebody's cellphone. And they're all standing around the judge's bench to look at the cellphone. So we are asking for an upgrade on our video audio system to allow evidence to be presented accordingly. On our screen where it should be attached an audio to be able to listen and view the video, be able to have our screen come down and not turn itself off in the middle of trial.
And this was budgeted for this year?
This was budgeted.
Yes, as part of the CIP, so.
Okay. The other question is, is, are any of the, the federal funds, is this possible for any of that? Recovery or any of those?
It could be, yes, but since it was budgeted, we took it out of CIP, so. But yes, it could fall under that.
I would rather spend some of our tax dollars and bring them back than, if we can.
So I, what we're gonna, we're planning to do with the COVID money is the second round is submit for all salaries and loss of revenue, but then we can use that dollars however you'd like. But Pam and I have a plan for all of the money we were allocated, so. An easy plan.
Pam's got us covered.
Already spent.
Already spent, okay. All right, yeah, it's, when I was talking to Sherry about this, she was telling me some of the horrors you'll have to go through. And I think one of them, she was talking about whenever the jury looks at evidence, she has to give them her computer or something and.
Yes, they give my, I have Dottie stay with them cause I hand them the city attorney's laptop, which is my computer. It's, that's just my computer, that's what I use. And it's like, good lord, I don't want them looking around and seeing, I don't know what, it's not that interesting.
They don't wanna see how many solitary games you won.
So, exactly, what has she been looking at on Amazon instead of working? Yes, so, yeah, so IT's gonna have dedicated laptops in the courtroom, in the jury room. The monitors are actually gonna start working again, the judge will have a monitor. Dottie will, we never did this, Dottie will have control when I say, states evidence too. She can bring that up on the screen instead of me, or, excuse me, Mr. Aldridge, out trying to manipulate the laptop and getting things up. And it'll, yeah, it'll be better, yeah, that, the monitors were going out and then the screen, it's a wonderful screen, it comes down, and it was just deciding to go back to the ceiling. And now after Nicholas, it's like, I'm just not coming down anymore. We don't know what it is, but apparently 2008 doesn't seem not long ago, but apparently it's old technology. So, yeah, it's, it's, it's a good plan. It is, it is used frequently, it's used at least once a week, if not more. And we can't, I mean, we can have bench trials where we all gather around the judge and look at things, but we can't have jury trials doing that.
Okay, any other questions? If not, I'll take motions.
I'd like to make a motion since I'm sitting here next to the city attorney.
She's gonna kick you.
I did not threaten him this.
To update the audio vision system for the municipal court building in the amount not to exceed $75,000.
A motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Come back and visit us.
You're seeing you, Dottie.
See you in another 30 years.
Have, item 11 is approve second amendment to the reclaim water agreement with Dow Chemical Company.
Um, so Dow has agreed to pay us more money for the reclaimed water. This is an agreement we have with them, so it's a change because the CPI index has increased since 2017. So they've agreed to up that. The new recommended floor adjustment is $80,000, but yes.
All right, any questions? From council? All right. I don't have any questions, so I'll take a motion if we want to agree to.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the second amendment to the reclaim water agreement with the Dow Chemical Company.
Second.
Then we have a second from Councilman Sinhanya. Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Okay. Item 12, discussing consider resolution casting vote for Missouri County Appraisal District Board of Director, Jurors' Candidates. We talked about this a couple of months, a couple of meetings ago. And we had asked about where the, uh, again, we have such a small number of votes. I think it's only 45 votes compared to BISD having thousands. And I believe who they, we were told that the person is, is that, is it Gail?
Gail Robinson.
Yeah, is the one that they, they cast their votes to. So we can choose to do anything. We can choose not to cast any votes, we can choose to cast votes for anybody or fall in line with BISD. So it's up to us.
I'm gonna read it.
Yes.
This is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Lake Jackson, Texas casting votes for the candidates for the Board of Directors of the Missouri County Appraisal District.
So any thoughts?
Gail Robinson would be suggested board for their first mission.
Is it a motion?
Yes, a motion.
Okay, we have a motion for Gail Robinson. Looking for a second.
I'll second it.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we have, we'll cast our votes for Gail Robinson. Thank you. Item 12 is discuss and consider resolution, oh, sorry, not 12, 13. We're gonna go to city manager update.
So Modesto's out today. There unfortunately is not much in way of Hurricane Nicholas updates. Sabrina and her team are still waiting on direction from the state telling us if, what we're allowed to do with the mulch, with all the debris and everything. So we're just waiting for their approval or their denial of our proposition to spread the mulch.
I came and picked up a load.
Thank you. We need more people too.
Picked up more.
Um, so we're just waiting on that. I, we believe most, if not all of the debris has been collected. That was a great effort by Sabrina's team and the other cities that came and helped us, as well as our contractor. So that has been taken care of.
If you have a chance, you see anybody from Clute, tell them thanks, cause they, they came in and helped us out with some crews on the weekends.
Yeah, speaking of the debris and the problems we were having with the big debris and the bags and all that stuff. So I thought about that a little bit more. And in the upcoming hurricane season, you know, when we put out like the hurricane guide, things like that, does that sound like a good place where we can put some education in?
Sure.
About this is, you know, this is where you put this and this has to be separated like that. And just start, start that process of educating everybody.
I'm sure there's something we can do. I think I've seen something like that before, but yeah, we can continue to, it's just, it's just reeducating people and getting people and finding different ways to do it. I mean, now we have different ways to get the information out there, so that's, that'll help also. We have not started mulching this stuff yet, have we? We're just.
No, at this point in time, we still have it as our temporary storage over on the old landfill. We are, that's what Megan was referring to. We are in the process of trying to get permission from TCEQ to either mulch and grind on spot or what options we have to do to get rid of this, all this extra.
Burn baby barn.
That takes a whole nother big process, so, you know, I'm good either way.
A city bonfire.
Yeah.
What's, what's, what is it so particular about?
It's on top of an old landfill and there are strict regulations about what you can and can't do on top of an old landfill and for how long you have to leave it alone. They're afraid you're gonna break the crust on top and let out whatever might be in there or cause issues down through there. I mean, everything that's in there, it's all methane, so, you know. You, you could have that in there, you don't know what was in there from '92. I mean, Sal was here, he probably put some stuff all up in there, you know.
Yeah.
But that's what their main concern is, is getting, breaking that crust is what they keep referring to it as, is, you know, breaking the crust on the landfill. I was in discussions with TCEQ today, you know, telling him, hey, look, this is what we're looking to do. We'd like, I'm also applying for a bit of a extension to continue to store there a little bit longer.
Cause we had like a 90-day or something.
We have, till December 12th is when, when we're going to, December 13th is when our current permit goes out. But with the holidays coming up, I was a little concerned cause the, what they've given me as far as being able to chip and spread on top of this landfill is a very long permit. And Brian Sidebottom has been very gracious enough to volunteer to help me go through all of that to try to figure it out. And I've been in contact with a Mr. Arthur Denny there at TCEQ to try to get, you know, what their definitions of things are and how they, they really want this here. So that is our primary option right now, that's our best option. That's what we're trying to get, is the chip and grind in place, so.
Okay, thank you. Investment reports or anything?
Yeah, so you guys will see up on the screen, there is the September monthly investment report. If you have specific questions, I can yield those to finance or we can ask Modesto and follow up later. But this is the accounts, the percentage of that money that has been put into those accounts.
No Bitcoin?
No Bitcoin, unfortunately.
So the only question I have is, does the insured limit applies to any of these accounts? The FDIC insured limits, do they apply to these accounts?
The accounts at First National, which would be really the only one that applies to, or we have FDIC insurance, but they also have to pledge securities to our account because.
FDIC insurance is $250,000.
Obviously not enough to cover five million.
Right, that's what I was asking, is there?
They have to pledge securities to our account. So like, to cover whatever balance.
Okay. So any other questions, we'll move on to construction updates.
Like I said before, the, the ramp projects is progressing quite nicely. As a matter of fact, they're probably on their last, on their last project this week. The, we also did some or advanced some of the pavement repair, the spot repairs. In this particular case, it was the OCD portion of that, which was the most traffic, I guess, challenging one. We had a, I believe, a chief side bob told me that there had been an accident during the process, even though with, with police presence there. So, but that's, that's finished, it's over. Now we're just gonna wait for the period of curing period for the concrete. Hopefully it'll be no more than 14 days and we can open it up again for travel. The, the project on, the project on Walnut Street is also coming to a, a final. They are gonna be pouring half of that street tomorrow, I believe. That's when they were hoping to get some concrete to, to at least get that portion out of the, out of the way there. That's, that's been going on for a long time. People are tired, so we're hoping that that thing will be finishing, finishing up soon. And we are now, we have put out the project on, on the downtown canopy. That was, that was put out for bid and that will be coming to you next, next meeting with the recommendation from the architect. As a matter of fact, there's gonna be two projects, also the, the recreational center roof, the natatorium roof and the remaining portion.
The canopy is, should we bring it, just removing it and then what the facade's gonna look like?
Correct, removing and restoring it to some degree of completion.
Right.
And as far as bond projects go, the downtown project, I plan on getting out a letter to the businesses and the property owners at some point this month, definitely before the first, just to kind of let them know what the future's gonna look like, what our construction start date is gonna look like. So I'll work with our engineering staff as well as Kimberly Horn to put that out. So that'll go out this month. I'll send you guys a copy of it before it goes out first, though. And then you guys met Mr. Thorne this evening, so that is my update on the animal control facility. We're really excited to get started on that, so. All, you'll be hearing from us a lot with that.
So you're following that project too?
Yes, sir.
Animal control, so are you following all the projects?
All the bond projects, yes, sir.
So we can point, go see her.
Yeah.
All right, okay, thank you. Items of community interest, we'll start with Mr. Brodus.
Sure, I'd like to wish a, a thank you and congratulations to our Parks and Rec group, including our new interim director and her staff, especially including Ms. Emerson Yellen on their very successful Boo Bash that we went to at the McLean Park. My girls loved it. My wife was a costume contest judge and it was, you know, it wasn't bedlam, everybody did what they were supposed to do. But wow, there was a ton of people there and much, much better attended, I think, than they expected. And it still went off without a hitch and everybody had a good time and was being safe and having fun. So a very successful event and it was awesome. That's good, and Mary was there as well.
Yeah, we showed up at, just before six and we thought we'd get there a little bit early and things would start, you know, speeding up. We got there and said, okay, we're already late.
I thought the same, I had the exact same reaction.
It was very impressive.
Yep, very good job, thank you.
Feneh?
I'd just like to remind everybody that Tuesday, November 7th, 2nd is Election Day. We've got eight constitutional amendments on the ballot. So if you haven't had a chance to look at those, please look at them, read them carefully and go vote.
Tomorrow.
Literally, I clocked myself. It was less than five minutes to park my car, go vote and get back in my car. So it's quick, yeah, tomorrow.
Very good reminder, thank you, Rhonda.
Mr. Baker?
None at this time.
All right, just one other thing is the trick or treating that we had here in City Hall went real well. Everybody I talked to as they were going out, they, that had come in previous years, they said they really liked the way we did it this year, that it really went well and stuff. So that was, that was great received. And, um, saw some pictures from the concert that we ended up, that we had at the Civic Center. And it still looks like, uh, there was one group that came as a group of stick people. And that was pretty impressive. But anyway, all right, staff, anything?
Yes, sir.
All right, we're adjourned.